Hulu, Netflix, Peacock, Amazon Prime, Disney Plus. Streaming media services change not only people's viewing habits but also change the dynamics facing WCTV. Content is tailored to specific viewer interests, which for the viewer is a good thing. It allows people to cut the cord and eliminate programming they neither watch or need. An unforeseen consequence is that it impacts WCTV in a very challenging and costly way.
WCTV is funded almost entirely by a percentage of cable company's revenues based off the amount of cable subscribers we have in Wilmington. In short, less cable subscribers equals less revenue for WCTV. If you utilize any of WCTV's resources by creating your own program or watching local meetings and sports online and you are not a cable subscriber, there is a way to help. I hope you will consider making a donation so that we can continue delivering these programs and more to you. For those of you who have made a donation, I thank you. We do receive these and we are very appreciative.
I'd like to ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of our Constitution stands for my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. I just do want to mention that board is wearing an item of pink this evening in recognition of breast cancer awareness month. I need my glasses so I can see. First, we're going to move on to transmitting of Treasury warrant number 14, 14A, 15, and 15A.
Make a motion to approve?
Second? All in favor, roll call, please. Mr. De Palma?
Garrett Palmer, yes?
Kevin Kyra, yes?
Greg Bendel, yes?
Judy O'Connell, yes?
Lil Amoselli, yes. So moved. There are no minutes to approve this evening, so we'll move on to appointments. First up, we have Paul Launey, Town Engineer, Police Chief Desmond, and Traffic Officer Furbush regarding the intersection of Middlesex Ave and Clark Street. And Jamie McGoldy, Operations. Thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We're here tonight to discuss our recommendation for the board to consider and always stop at the intersection of Middlesex Ave and Clark Street. This is, if you turn your attention to the screen, this is the existing conditions of Clark Street and Middlesex Ave. Clark Street is currently under stop control while Middlesex Ave is free-flowing. What we've seen after reviewing the data, crash data for four years, there's been about 16 angle-type crashes. That's well above the minimum, the state average for unsignaled intersections. The town engaged TEC, that's our traffic consultant, to do an operation and traffic analysis at the intersection. And what they've identified is a safety concern. It's essentially limited site distance or less than, I'm sorry, the site distance available on Clark Street is less than the minimum distance required for a vehicle traveling on Middlesex Ave to react to that car. So we find that, and it's our recommendation and it concurs with their recommendation in finding as well, that an always stop would remedy that situation. We'd also, if the board considers moving forward with this always stop, we'd be looking at changing the bulb out of the flashing beacon from yellow to red, restriping the crosswalks, of course, striping a stop bar. And actually, I'm going to flip to the next. Should have done this a few moments ago. But this is what the new, or the, this is an aerial with the stop signs and stop bars implemented on Middlesex Ave, which is here, running north to south. The other inquiry we had for, was for Clark Street, and that's to evaluate whether or not a truck exclusion is warranted. Looking at the traffic data, it was below the warrant prescribed by the MUTCD, which that, as you may recall from the Woburn Street evaluation we did over the summer, that warrant is 5%. The average daily truck traffic must be greater than 5% of the average daily traffic. This, in this case, the Clark Street average truck traffic, daily average truck traffic is 3.6%, so it's below that 5% threshold. Thank you for your time. We're here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you. I'll open it up to the board for questions.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Thank you for having me forward and how it was done. Read through it. And just a question, and I had this from a resident, actually, on Middlesex. It was mentioned to me that there was a truck exclusion on that portion of Middlesex from, say, right at the beginning of the common where the 4th of July building is, all the way to the end of that street. And that it was removed when the high school was being built to allow trucks to go that way while there was construction on the other side. And then the truck exclusion was never put back up. And they say 18 wheelers are driving down there. And I happened to be there when one drove down. They were pretty big trucks going down there. So I don't know if that was true or not, or is that, I don't recall, but do you recall if there was, that portion of Middlesex was a truck exclusion? And then it was taken down because of the building, then never put back up?
Yeah, I don't recall that whether or not that was the case. It very well could have been, although I know there have been instances where truck exclusions signs have been placed at different locations. But as you know, from the Woburn Street experience, there's a particular process we have to go through in order to make them enforceable. And to the extent there may have been signs, and perhaps Mr. McGoldy can comment on this because he may have some history, but I don't know whether there was an enforceable, ever an enforceable truck exclusion there, because presumably if there was, even if the signs were removed, that exclusion would still be on the books, so to speak. But I'll defer to others.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hall. I'd have to check our records, Mr. Kyra, but I do believe that is correct. If there was an exclusion, it would be more just signage, but I do not believe there was an enforceable established truck exclusion on that portion of Middlesex Ave.
Yeah, I just, you know, it was asked to me by a resident, so I thought I'd bring it up just to be checked on. Thank you.
We can definitely wait to see what DPW says, but based on our files with the Traffic and Safety Office, that was one of those ones that were just put in place to try to reduce, because we've gotten some numerous complaints ourselves as far as trucking. And when we look into it, it was definitely one of those that we could find. And again, we can wait for DPW, but from what we can find, those ones were one of those posts that were just stuck in there to try to alleviate, or try to remedy a problem, but it was never followed through as far as being implemented properly. So we could never enforce that truck sign.
Yeah, there were three or four, so in fact, when Chief Agonist took over that, some had put them up, but they weren't really legal to enforce. So over the years, they, I don't know specifically about this one, Mr. Kyra, but I know we've taken down three or four of them because they just weren't enforceable.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, all for being here this evening. I appreciate all the work that's been done. I see on the pages on, oh, excuse me, page 12, there'll be an installation of some new stop-ahead signage on the northbound and southbound Middlesex Ave approaches. I just want to publicly endorse that. I think it's probably going to be needed because people aren't expecting to see that. Will that signage remain there indefinitely? As soon once it's installed, it would stay there?
Yes, that's correct. We will, we have discussed as well, having interim period, like a week or so, of electronic message boards. So putting the signs up, but putting bags over them for now, not painting the stop bars, because I think that would be confusing as well, for a week to alert drivers of this change. And then the day we paint the stop bars, we pull the bags and change the bulbs, of course, to red.
Sure. I appreciate you explaining that, just because sometimes you can have an unintended consequence of changing configuration of an intersection while people are understanding that that environment has changed. Presuming that there would be a favorable vote from this board, what is the timeline in terms of the implementation of this? Once you get a vote of this board, if we were to proceed forward, how long do you think it would take for this all to come to fruition?
Well, I don't want to steal operations manager's fun here, but I'll try. I believe the stop signs are in stock.
That's right.
And we could install them as early as next week?
Yeah, I think what we're going to plan to do is as early as tomorrow is install the sign posts. And we thought about this back and forth over the course of the afternoon, rather than installing the signs with tarts or bags over them, we'll probably just leave the post blank without any signs on them. Because that way, if a car is coming from the other direction and they see a blank from behind, even though the bag on it, we don't want to give anybody the false impression that this is our, this is our something else. We'll leave the post blank for about a week, where we have the message boards up to alert people that there's going to change. And then all in one afternoon, we'll change the overhead light, put the rest of the signage up, repaint the stop bars. We'll have the police be killed there anyway because we have to change the bulb. So when all that's done, we're just going to take a step back and see how it's working. And we envision it to be in policy in about a week.
And it's our intention to do some, you know, informational enforcement with the traffic team down there, where we would obviously have a grace period, give people time to understand that the stop sign there before we do anything that, so hopefully that would help, you know, alleviate confusion.
And then with that, just being thorough in the line of questioning, so this may seem an inappropriate question, but I'll ask it anyway. Is that with this stop sign implementation, do you believe that this will have any impact on your response times from your station location in terms of getting out to the public with potential traffic queuing backing up?
No, it's a good question, actually. But no, I don't think it would have any significant, obviously, you know, they're required to stop for stop signs and red lights. But I think the, you know, you're talking seconds, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, questions?
Any question?
Yeah. Just a second.
Chief Desmond, are you planning on a social media campaign to warn everyone, or notify everyone that there is going to be a change there?
Yes, absolutely. You know, it's not our intention, you know, our number one priority here is safety, not to, you know, kind of entrap people. So certainly, we're going to do our best to get the information out there and, you know, have a grace period for a significant amount of time.
Thank you.
I'd like to add a motion to take a vote on approval of putting in all stopway at the intersection of Middlesex Ave and Clark Street.
A motion. Put it down.
Okay, do I have a second? Second. All in favor, roll call, please.
Garrett Palmer, yes?
Kevin Kyra, yes?
Greg Bendel, yes?
Judy O'Connell, yes?
Lil Amoselli, yes. Granted, thank you very much for all the work. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. All right. Next, we're going to move right into Communications.
Yes, the first item under Communications is a memo from me to the board that is just noting the budget schedule. We actually have begun that process as of the department head meeting last week. Instructions were provided to department heads with respect to preparation and modification of the current capital improvement plan, which as you know is a five-year plan, runs from fiscal '23 to '27. So department heads are those departments that have large-scale items, which typically have a useful life of three years or longer and a value of $25,000 or more. Will begin revising the current capital plan. The deadline for that is November 3rd. And then at that point, we will roll out the instructions on the operating budget for the coming fiscal year, which again will be due in early December. Carrie Coburn-Dion, the Assistant Town Manager, Brian Perry, the Finance Director, and I will be going through budgets during the month of December and into early January, and then ultimately prepare the final budget for presentation to the Board of Selectmen at your January 24th meeting. Right after that, the Finance Committee kicks into gear and has their meetings. Typically, they meet on Tuesdays and Thursdays through February and into early March. Then we'll have the public hearing in mid-March, followed by town meeting, annual town meeting, which is scheduled for April 30th of this year, of next year, rather, '22. Next, under Correspondence, is a letter from Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito, just announcing the town has received a grant from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. This is for the Wilmington Police Department, $34,999. It's a municipal road safety grant program. Some of the eligible items here include the traffic signs, those digital traffic signs that you see around town that measure speed. Talking to the chief, preliminarily, the expectation is to use this funding to purchase some mobile signs that can be mounted at various locations to provide traffic enforcement. As part of the requirement for purchasing equipment, the town must engage in a so-called enforcement campaign, and the Police Department will be doing that in the coming fiscal year, which includes winter impairment, so-called winter impairment driving enforcement, distracted driving enforcement, the click-it or ticket program, speed enforcement, and then summer impaired driving enforcement. So that's good news in terms of the grant. Correspondence that was sent to Brian Kane, the Executive Director of the MBTA Advisory Board, just noting that the Board of Selectmen have designated Selectman O'Connell as the town's representative and designee on the MBTA Advisory Board. I would expect, once the Advisory Board gets meetings again, that we'll be informed of those so that Selectman O'Connell can participate. We have correspondence from the Olin Corporation, specifically from James Cashwell, who's the Director of Environmental Remediation. And this really serves to close out the requirements associated with the Cook Ave Water Line project, which was funded by Olin, noting that per the agreement, the work has been completed. The vendors and subcontractors that were required to be paid have been paid. At this point, all the shop drawings and associated engineering documents have been prepared and presented to the engineering office, and the line is now assumed by, the responsibility for the line is assumed by the town. I would just note that as part of this effort, two residents are now fully connected to water. There were five additional properties that have stubs, water stubouts to those properties so that should they choose in the future to connect, they can do so. And then the road, because of the work associated with running the line, the road was repaved The next item is an update on the senior center building project, and I'll defer to Selectman Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, Madam Chair. So the Senior Center Building Committee met right in this room here on October 6th at 6:00 PM, and the committee got to reassess some of the test fits for the three remaining sites that are being looked at. This current site here at the Glen Road, the Swain-Vazell Center site, and also the St. Dorothy's Parcels site. The Dietz &amp; Company architects presented some really great visual graphics that night that we were able to actually get a visual of what potentially could look like at each site, and a couple different options at each site. And so I thought it was a really positive, productive meeting, and there was a lot of great questions asked. We will be meeting again on October 21st and on November 4th. Those are our next meeting dates. And the committee and the OPM plan to provide regular updates about the project to the public by using social media and conventional media coming up. But would encourage everybody to check out the meeting that is broadcast and now available on WCTV. The meetings are broadcast live, and if you didn't get a chance to see it, you can visit WCTV's website. And certainly, I will, happy to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, under, on the board's agenda, is the board to consider the recommendation of the DPW and police, which has already taken place with regard to the intersection at Clark and Middlesex. Then we have the board to consider the application of Jared Rankin for a constable designation. So you'll recall at the last meeting that the, there was one individual reference where there was no confirmation that the person was a resident of Wilmington. In accordance with the general laws, the requirement for application to be a constable is that the person who is applying provide five references from the community with which they are seeking to serve, one being an attorney, and the other four being residents of the town. There was, again, a question on one, so the board opted to defer. I followed up with Mr. Rankin, and he has submitted another reference on, who is in fact a resident of Wilmington. So he has met the requirement of providing references from a local attorney, as well as four other residents from the town.
Open it up for questions, comments?
Just a question on the.
Garrett Palmer?
Go ahead.
Do I have a second? Mr. De Palma?
Mr. Hall, he did submit his letters that you were questioning at last meeting, correct?
Yes, he submitted the fourth, or actually, fifth individual reference, who is in fact from Wilmington.
Thank you.
Just a second. Get your microphone.
Yeah, just in reading the memo, it says that we received one recommendation from an attorney, Robert G. Peterson, Sr., and, what did I read it? Three, and at least three of whom reside in Wilmington. So that one plus three is four. Aren't you supposed to get five? I don't.
Right. So the fourth individual he had submitted at the time, who was a Maria Cianus Thigpen, I checked with the town clerk's office, and we did not have her listed as a resident. So as a consequence, based upon that, the board deferred. I contacted Mr. Rankin to ask him to confirm residency for Ms. Thigpen, and I'm presuming, but don't know for certain, that she perhaps is not a resident, because the newest reference is Caitlin Rankin. So she in fact is a resident. So that would be the fifth between the Attorney Peterson and the other three references.
Okay. I didn't see Caitlin's in this part of the memo. Maybe I missed it. I'm sorry.
That most recent reference was just provided within the last week or so.
Okay, so it was not, so I'm not going crazy. It wasn't in the memo?
No, no, it was not in the original. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure. I knew I.
Okay. Any other further questions, comments?
Kevin, it's actually further on in the packet. I have it right here.
Okay.
It's behind the Internal Revenue Slip.
Behind the IRS, huh? Okay.
I would just note that if the board is so inclined to approve of this request, the bond that he is required to have, which is a $5,000 bond, I noticed the current bond that he provided was dated October of 2020, so I would expect that it expires October of 2021. So that the, if the board chooses to grant this request, that the, that it be contingent upon providing a new bond.
Okay. Okay. I'll pose a motion for approval of the application of Jared Rankin as constable contingent on a renewed bond of $5,000?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor, please roll call.
Is there a discussion?
Garrett Palmer, yes?
Discussion?
Oh, any further discussion? I apologize. Good, okay. Roll call, sorry.
Kevin Kyra, yes?
Greg Bendel, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes?
Lil Amoselli, yes. Okay, so granted.
Next, under Board to Consider, is a request from Ryan Feeney, who is seeking to have a block party on October 23rd. And the location is Blueberry Lane off of Ashwood Ave. Again, October 23rd, 6:00 PM to, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The police have no concerns, Public Works has no concerns, fire was alerted. And as is always the case with these types of requests, if the applicant is so inclined or interested, Public Works can provide sawhorses or barriers during the time of the block party.
Any comments?
Make a motion to approve?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, roll call, please.
Garrett Palmer, yes?
Kevin Kyra, yes?
Greg Bendel, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes?
Lil Amoselli, yes.
So moved.
Next, under Board to Consider, is a request from Joe Marie O'Mahony on behalf of the Wilmington High School Friends of Volleyball Side Out Foundation to use the Swain Green on Wednesday, October 27th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM for the purpose of a trunk-or-treat event for players and their family members. I would just note, in terms of the correspondence she sent, she's directing this to me in Beverly. I'm hoping, hope all is well. I am writing to give the Board of Selectmen an update on the high school volleyball program and ask for permission to use the Swain Green on Wednesday, October 27th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM for a team event. PM for a team event. Wilmington High School volleyball is having a great season, and we are excited to be having our senior game on 10/14 and the Dig Pink game on 10/19. Dig Pink is part of the Side Out Foundation, which supports breast cancer research. If the members of the Board of Selectmen or anyone listening would like to make a donation, the website for the Wilmington High School team's fundraiser is Wilmington High School Friends of Volleyball colon Side Out Foundation. And then, at the 10/19 game, players will be honoring survivors and hosting a raffle to raise funds to meet their goal of raising $1,000 for this worthy cause. Finally, I'm asking the board to vote on approving the use of the Swain Green from 7:00 to 9:00 PM on 10/27 to host a post-game trunk-or-treat event for just the players of the program and their families, weather permitting. Thank you for your consideration, and go Cats. The police have no concerns. DPW, no concerns.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, roll call.
Garrett Palmer, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Lilia Masselli, yes.
Next, under board to consider is a request of community groups to conduct events which require road closures. You'll recall, this was started a few years ago. At the time, we were getting quite a number of requests for road races and other events that were requiring police details in some instances, and sometimes Public Works to be present on an overtime basis. Typically, they were on a weekend. And so the premise at the time was to, if we could get some forewarning, these things could be incorporated into the budget. As it turns out, unfortunately, between COVID and other circumstances, the number of events has really tailed off. So at present, the requests are from the Wilmington Fourth of July Committee for a Firecracker 5K Road Race Thursday, June 30 of 2022, Soul Sisters Running Club 5K Road Race Saturday, December 10, 2022, and the Wilmington Little League Opening Day Parade Saturday, April 22nd, 2023. There is, this has been reviewed by police and DPW. There are no concerns expressed by either department.
Make a motion to approve the requests.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, roll call, please.
Garrett Palmer, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Lilia Masselli, yes. Approved.
Next, under board to consider is a request of Beth Rooney on behalf of the Wilmington High School Football Touchdown Club to use the municipal parking lot on Sunday, September 18, 2022, from 9:00 AM to noon for the purpose of a fundraising car wash. Again, there's no schedule conflicts, no other concerns.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, roll call, please.
Garrett Palmer, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Lilia Masselli, yes. Approved.
Final item under the board to consider is scheduling the December meeting. Typically, the practice has been, in light of the holiday, that the board will meet just once in December. And as it turns out, the 13th is really right in the middle of the month, and so I would suggest the board consider your December meeting for the 13th.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, roll call, please.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Lilia Masselli, yes. Approved. Okay, next, we will move on to public comments. We have any comments? Nope. Okay, there are no comments. Any announcements?
Just one, Madam Chair. I did want to point out, and I know the town manager and I had a discussion on it, that the Elder Services puts out a newsletter, very nice newsletter. And for the month of October, they made mention that October, Monday, October 11th, 2021, was the observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day. And it's actually Columbus Day observance. And that's, I just want to make that point, that Indigenous Peoples' Day is not quite yet a federal holiday as Columbus Day is, and should have been recognized in the paper. And I believe there will be a correction coming out for that, so.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, just to confirm, I did have the conversation with Selectman Kyra, also spoke separately with Terry Marciallo, the elderly services director. The correction has been made on the newsletter in the electronic form on the website. And in addition, there will be notice of the change at their elderly services commission meeting. I did speak with her. She, and I believe that there was certainly no ill will intended here, and, you know, as many communities, some communities anyways, have opted to change the reference to, from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. But clearly, that's not the case in Wilmington. And in order for something like that to happen, it would require Board of Selectmen action.
Thank you. Any new business? No new business. Okay, we'll move on to important dates.
Important dates, October 13th is a brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Again, on October 16th, another brush drop-off, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 18th is Wildwood School Building Committee Virtual Meeting, 6:30. Just by way of explanation, this is really to provide a status on where things are in terms of the process that we are in during the eligibility period. So folks are welcome to participate virtually. October 20th, brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Again, on the 20th of October, Economic Development Committee Town Hall Auditorium, 6:00 PM. October 21st, as noted earlier, Senior Center Building Committee Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 PM. October 23rd, another brush drop-off, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The October 24th is the Horables Parade, Rotary Park, 4:30 PM. The 25th of October is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, Room 9, 7:00 PM. And then, October 25th through the 29th is a curbside collection of yard waste. And then we have brush drop-off, again, on the 27th, Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and again, on the 30th, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Great, thank you. Next, Selectman Bendel will do our salute to service for Christian Jensen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my distinct honor to present tonight's salute to service on behalf of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen and our residents to Christian J. Jensen for his service to our country and United States Navy. He served from 1944 to 1947, and he's at the young age of 95 now. Wilmington resident, longtime Wilmington resident, lived in town for more than 60 years with his, was married to his wife Phyllis until she passed away in 2019. But he served as an aviation electronics technician, mate first class. And he's obviously also very active in his church and active with the Masons in town. And for all these reasons and many more, we are extremely appreciative of Christian's service to our community and to our country.
Thank you, Selectman Bendel, and thank you, Mr. Jensen, for your service. That will conclude our meeting for this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Garrett Palmer, yes.
Kevin Kyrie, yes.
Greg Bendel, yes.
Judy O'Connell, yes.
Lilia Masselli, yes. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.